We already was approved. And then, for whatever reason, I don't know what happened, it just died. So we're just trying to get that done.
So that's your, you're making an amendment that the $11,565,000 be increased by $470,000 as follows. $300,000 for the splash park, $150,000 for the Juliet Low electrical canopy and concrete, and $20,000 for a dog park fence?
Correct.
Okay, that's your amendment? Is there a second to the amendment?
I'd like to make a friendly amendment to add the council chamber audio upgrade.
I'm sorry.
There's already money set aside for that?
There is? All right.
Well, I mean, the 150 should be the right amount, is right here, I'm sorry, I didn't.
Okay, is there a second, is there a second for, for Mr. Kadim's amendment?
I'll second it.
You're seconding it? Okay.
Is there discussion?
Discussion?
Madam Chairman.
Eleven, four, four seventy.
I'm unclear as to the total on the splash park because you've already got almost $100,000 in block grant.
Well, I mean, when you look at what it actually costs to run it from, from start to finish, from what I understand.
It's $300,000?
It's actually more than that. So we already have the one plus, but then the 300 should finish it up.
Okay, I'd like to call in the Finance Director.
I just want to point out, Mr. Kadim, I don't know the cost of a splash park, but running the splash, the splash park has nothing to do with capital bonding. This is just for the capital improvements to the town. So if you're talking about expenses and maintenance and employees, that's, none of that has to do with this. You'll have to deal with that in the general fund budget.
Yeah, but this is not that. Because, you know, the park is self-maintained.
Okay, Ms. Manis?
I understand completely what Mr. Kadim is asking for. He's asking for Juliet Low Park to be finished, and he's asking for the splash park to get done now rather than later. So we like to plan things out in this town like this, and, you know, spread it out over time. And, listen, I've been down in that area, I've, you know, I've visited, I've part, you know, gone to Bird's Eye Complex. There are needs, there are needs in the area. Clover Field is a need. I'm hoping some of that bar, I don't know if you're reading online, but, you know, there's issues all over town, and there's areas of town that have been neglected. I'm happy to see things for Booth Park added because I think there's things that need to happen up by where I live, too. But I think what Mr. Kadim is doing rightly so is he's trying to move projects forward for his own district. It's been a long time since that district has had a strong advocate that has been able to maybe even garner one second on an amendment. So I think that that's pretty admirable. Remember I said hold people to their votes? You know, I, I think that he's just trying to advocate for his district, and it's worthwhile thinking about. He's just trying to speed up a project that we want to prolong and lengthen, and by the time the children are grown and in college, they'll be at a splash park.
And just.
Thank you, is there any more discussion on this item? I'm going to ask other members first. No? Okay, Mr. Kadim?
Excuse me, could the motion be repeated?
It is a motion to add $450,000?
Yeah, it's a motion, I could paraphrase, I've been making notes. It's a motion to change the grand total from $11,565,000 to $12,350,000. An increase of $470,000 comprised as follows. $300,000 for a splash park, $150,000 for Juliet Low electricity canopy and concrete, and $20,000 for a dog park fence. Is that correct, Mr. Kadim?
Correct, and I don't know if, with you guys, I think I seen $20,000 for the, the council audio and video. I think $150,000.
That's already funded.
Say it again?
It's already funded. From past CIPs. From past CIPs, yep.
Okay.
I have one more question. I want to make sure in this amendment, and if it needs to be added. This complete streets that everybody's talking about, Mr. Hibanski's always here talking about complete streets. Is that funded in the CIP? Are we ready to fund that? Is that happening? We need to put money aside.
Complete street bike paths, the 75,000, yeah, that's what you're talking about, too, yeah. Is that in there already? Is that enough? Or should be added? Complete street design.
Complete street bike paths. They want to add 75,000. My impression was that that was covered by a grant.
If we, if we have, I, I think the question is if, like, if there's a town match, and we pass the CIP and it's over and done.
I just want to be clear, we're talking about Mr. Kadim's amendment. So complete streets isn't part of that amendment. If you want to make another one.
Would it be okay to add that to the, would it be okay to add that to the amendment?
You want to amend your, the amendment to the amendment?
You can amend your amendment one time. Or you can decide this and have another amendment, it's your pleasure, the body's pleasure.
Well, I would like to add it, so I would have to start over, is what you're saying.
You want to add?
The 75,000 for the complete streets for the bikes? Because, you know, these guys are fighting for that as well, and everybody don't have a car, people drive bikes, too.
So that makes it $12,110,000.
Twelve million?
Twenty, twelve million, one hundred, ten thousand.
There's a lot, there's a lot of bike people out there, guys.
Is there, is there, you need to call for a second, as you know, Madam Chair, on the amendment to the amendment?
I'm sorry, I can't hear you.
You need to call, have a second on your amendment.
Is there a second to amend the amendment?
See, Mr. Harden just seconded that.
Okay.
And now you can have a discussion on the.
On the complete streets.
Only.
Okay. Discussion? Nope.
My opinion still is, is it enough? Is that enough to do what needs to be done with complete streets?
I don't, I don't have an answer to that. I, I don't know how much of the grant we're actually getting. I know that we've applied for it. I know that the bike path is going to be coming before the Town Traffic Authority soon. The $75,000 number we just threw out was brand new to me tonight. Yes or no is, flip a coin together.
A lot of, I'm just, a lot of residents are putting in time. Like, I went on the Wiki thing and, like, did, like, a path to Booth Park and thought it would be really cool. People are really buying into this, and we're trying to get more people to buy in. So if there's no money there for that, and if there's no match and no clear.
Sure.
I, I just want to point out.
Although, I, I hear you, I can't, I just heard $75,000 for the very first time tonight.
I just want to point out that there's 1.5 million in for road resurfacing and road reconstruction, and perhaps complete streets could come in under that.
Madam Chairman?
Yes.
I, too, had a lengthy discussions with the, the consultants that were putting together the hearings and maps of the complete street program. It was made very clear to me to do the entire program would be millions of dollars, and that it would happen over a period of years. And that the first proj, proj, the first process is to get the grant so that they could actually do the, the actual construction planning. So that's the first step. I really have a problem, you know, we, you know, we just went through a major, a major budget battle. You know, we had some members that even bothered to show up at the, at the budget workshops. And here we are, expanding, I mean, are we going to limit, hit the credit card limit? You know, how much more bonding are we going to do? You know, we, what is it, 10%, I think you said, of our total bond, our total budget, what we pay each year, is just in bond payments?
That's just the pension bonds?
You know, you know. We've got to tighten the belt sometime.
Okay, I'm going to call to, I'm, I'm going to call the vote for the amendment to the, to the, it's the amendment to the amendment, right?
The chair is correct. So that the chair is correct, so the vote you're taking right now is only whether $75,000 should be added to the amendment of Mr. Councilman Kadim.
Okay. Mr., all in favor, say aye?
Aye.
All opposed?
No.
No? Chair votes no.
Which motion are we voting on right now?
Again, on the $75,000 amendment to the amendment for the complete streets program, to put that into the CIP, which the, the next vote, overall vote, will be to bond all of this. So it's putting it essentially on a credit card. Okay, so let me do that again. All in favor, say aye?
Aye.
Aye.
Okay, all opposed?
No.
No? Okay, the motion fails two to six. Okay? The next one is the amendment, which was Mr. Kadim's amendment to essentially increase the package from $11,565,000 to $12,35,000?
No, it's to increase $11,565,000 by $470,000 for a total of $12,350,000.
Twelve million, thirty-five thousand?
Correct, the increase to be $300,000 for a splash park, $150,000 for Juliet, and $20,000 for a dog park.
Okay, is there?
Do we have a roll call, vote for this?
Sure.
Thank you.
Okay, Mr. Kadim, are you in?
Yes.
Mr. Harden?
Yes.
Mr. Young?
Yes.
Ms. Antezo?
No.
No.
Yes.
And the chair votes no, so the motion fails?
That's correct, you're required to have six votes.
The next thing is to have, going back to the amended ordinance, is to have a vote on that. Okay? This will require seven vote, I'm sorry, six votes to pass.
That's correct.
Okay, this will be a roll call vote also. Mr. Kadim?
No.
Okay, Mr. Harden? This is voting on the $11,565,000. Again, that includes all street resurfacing, tree removal, playground renovation, children's department renovation of the library, work on the library, $600,000 for the library, and, yeah, road resurfacing. And the BOE, it includes the roof replacement for Benell High, it includes air conditioning for Wilcox and Nickel School parking spaces and turnaround, and other improvements in town. Okay, I'm going to start again. Mr. Kadim?
It's always everywhere else but the South End, we can get everything fixed, so I'm saying no.
Okay, Mr. Harden?
I'll pass.
Okay, Mr. Young?
Yes.
Ms. Antezo?
Hell, Benell doesn't need a new. I, I'd like to, I'd like to table this thing.
Okay, it's a yes or no vote at this time.
This is the first time you looked at it.
It's been on the agenda, we had the book. Ms. Antezo, aye or nay?
No.
Okay.
We're not going to table it. Yes.
Yes.
No.
The chair votes yes, but the motion fails, so there's no.
You have a pass vote that I don't believe voted.
I'm sorry?
You have a pass vote that has to vote. Harden has to vote.
No.
Okay, the motion fails. Okay, so there will be no road resurfacing, no roof replacement for Benell High.
No sidewalk.
No sidewalk repair. I'm calling a recess. This is a 10-minute recess. Mr. Kadim, Mr. Harden. Okay, 7.6.1B, there's no point in doing that, so there will be no action taken on the bonding since the items that the money would have been bonded for were not approved. 7.6.
Madam Chairman.
No, 7.6.1. I'm sorry, 7.6.1C is an ordinance appropriating $762,500 for various public improvements in the capital equipment program for fiscal year 2016, 2017. That was placed on the table. Is there a motion to take that off the table, Mr. Chase?
Madam Chairman, I move we take item C off the table.
Okay, thank you, there's a second. Okay, it's off the table. Mr. Chase?
Madam Chairman, I would move resolve that the second reading of the above entitled ordinance be dispensed with as copies thereof have been received by all council members and the foregoing being hereby approved effective 30 days from passage. Please refer to appended page 21.
Okay, is there a second for that resolution?
Second.
Okay, all in fa, discussion? Okay, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye. All opposed?
Opposed.
Okay, the motion passes six to two. Oh, has, I'm sorry, it has to be roll call. Mr. Kadim?
No.
Mr. Harden?
Yes.
Mr. Young?
Yes.
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 No.
I vote yes, the motion passes six to two.
Madam Chairman.
Ms., no, I'm sorry, Ms. No, that was, no, we didn't need seven to pass that. Seven is for the voting, is for the bonding. The next item is an ordinance authorizing the issuance of $762,500 in bonds of the town to meet the appropriation for various public improvements in the capital equipment program for fiscal year 2016, 2017, and pending issuance thereof, the making of temporary borrowings for such purpose. That was placed on the table, is there a motion to take that off the table?
Madam Chairman, I move this be removed from the table.
Okay, is there a second?
Second, Harden.
Okay, thank you. Is, is there a resolution?
Madam Chairman?
Yes, Mr. Chase?
I would move resolve the second reading of the above ordinance be dispensed with as copies thereof have been received by all council members and the foregoing being hereby approved effective 30 days from passage as amended on pages 22 to 24.
Okay, thank you, is there a second for that?
Second.
Okay, thank you. Discussion?
Madam Chairman?
Wait, there's a discussion, Ms. Manis?
I just have a quick question regarding Public Works and the dump truck. This is in addition to the, to the other, this would, this is, is this highway, which part of Public Works would be using this dump truck?
I don't know who that's a question for.
CIO?
I imagine it'd be the part of Public Works that uses dump trucks. I don't know.
I'm sure it's one of those combo dump trucks, I remember hearing about this. It's for plowing and summertime, putting.
So it's not the truck that's, the vac truck that they need?
It's not a vac truck.
It's not going to be one of those?
It's a dump truck. Okay, thank you. Any other discussion?
Madam Chairman, just to review this very briefly, the police radio system is having major problems. There's been hackers in there that have been interfering with police work. That is the reason for, the police are asking for an upgrade. This also includes a wheelchair lift for Nickel School, which is a requirement. There are some students that need the wheelchair lift. Rest of it is self-explanatory as far as various school improvements.
Okay, thank you. Okay, seven votes are nee, yes, Mr. Kadim?
Yes, the dump truck, is it something that just came up? You know, in terms of needing, who's, who's answering that question? Because I didn't really get it clear.
I will answer that question. That's been in this book, the capital improvement program, and you can read all about it in there.
Yeah, I, I've read it, but thank you very much. Like, in terms of needing it, I don't, what was the stress of needing it? I mean, we have dump trucks, what was the stress of needing it? There's more things going on where we need another one, or is one can't be repaired?
It's part of the vehicle replacement plan. I think there's, I mean, every year, we have breakdowns, every year, we have trucks which reach or pass their extended life. These are the trucks, which you take the new truck, you put it at the front of the line, it does the heavy lifting, the big snow move in the, in the area, and then they move one back and they put it in, like, reclaim area for emergency use only.
What's the year old, what year old's the ones that we're replacing? Because, you know, every five years, I know they replace cars and things like that. This is the five-year up?
No, this truck's probably been around for over 12 years.
Okay, it's a long time coming, all right, thank you.
Okay, thank you. Okay, we're going to do roll call vote on this. Seven votes are needed for the bonding. If seven votes are not received, then there will be no money to pay for the appropriation. Okay, and the, all of the appropriations, or any of the appropriate, any of those appropriations are in the capital equipment program. Okay, so we will start with Mr. Kadim, do you vote yes or no?
Yes. Yes.
Yes.
Yes.
Yes.
Yes.
Yes, that passes eight to zero, thank you very much.
Madam Chairman?
Yes.
I voted no on the ordinance for the $11 million and so forth, for public improvements, and I would like to reconsider.
Okay, is there a second to having her reconsider her vote?
Second.
There's a second. Okay, all in favor of reconsidering, vote aye?
Aye.
All opposed?
Oppose.
Okay, then.
Until you're opposed?
I would.
Oppose.
Okay, so that passes seven to, the chair votes aye, so that passes seven to one for the reconsideration.
Okay, for reconsideration, I would like to then forward the ordinance that I had voted against, which is appropriating $11,565,000 for public improvements. As we, I guess we have to do these amendments over again, too.
No, we don't. Ms. Dulaclaire, do we need to?
Madam Chairman, if I, I think, I think I know the question that's coming. Because the item was not voted in favor and it was.
What?
Because the item failed a few moments ago before the recess. If you are, you've now voted in the affirmative to reconsider this, so the item is before the body. I just caution you that there was an amendment that was passed by the body. That amendment needs to be made again because the item you're considering right now is how it originally appears. Without that addition of the property acquisition of the 250, the deletion of the 25,000, and the reduction of the modular classroom walkways from 625 to 400.
Okay, thank you very much.
Okay, so, as far, let me ask the attorney.
I.
The process is that we redo the motion, and then the amendment is put forward.
Then we have to redo the amendment?
Yes. And then any other amendments would be put forward.
The process is you are now reconsidering an item that failed. So the item before the body is an ordinance appropriating $11,565,000 for various capital improvements in the capital improvement program for fiscal year 16, 17.
Okay.
So the item is as it appears in your call specifically on pages 16 and 17, without any amendments to it.
Okay.
All right.
Okay, so we have just voted to reconsider this. Is there amendment to this that you would like to make?
You should have a motion to approve and a second, and then open up two amendments. You're reconsidering it, but I think you should have a motion to approve the item.
Yes.
To approve this item or the amended item?
No, to approve the item. You're now reconsider, you voted to reconsider the item.
Right.
So now I think someone should move for the approval of this item.
Yes.
Okay, that's where, that's where I was going.
Now there should be a second.
Yep, okay, we're on the same page, that's where I was going.
Yeah, yeah, okay.
Is there a motion to approve this item?
So move, Madam Chairman.
Okay, is there a second for this?
I'll second it.
Okay, there's a second for the approval of this item. Is there a motion to amend this item?
May I do it? Okay. Madam Chairman, I would move, I guess we have to do both. An ordinance appropriating $11,565,000 for various public improvements in the capital improvement program for fiscal year 2016, 2017 from $11,565 to $11,565.
With the following changes.
With the following changes. Delaying by one year the Parks Department storage building, adding $250,000 for property acquisition, and reducing modular classroom sidewalks by $225,000 for a total of, it balances out of $250,000.
I'd like to offer a friendly amendment if I could.
Wait, no.
Second. Thank you.
Okay, there's an amendment to, what is, what did you say?
I'd like, she seconded it. I wanted to offer a friendly amendment to add $100,000 for Juliet Low Park.
Okay, is there a second for that?
Second.
Okay, all in favor of the friendly amendment to add $100,000 in for Juliet Low Park? We'll do this by roll call?
Aye.
Aye.
Aye. No.
Yes.
Yes.
No. Motion passes six to two. Okay? Now we're back to the, so now this is being increased to $11,665,000 for various public improvements in the capital improvement program.
Eleven million.
Right, because of the friendly amendment. Okay, so with the motion as amended by Mr. Chase.
Now you're just voting actually on the amendment by Mr. Chase.
Yes.
The item now, you're voting, you're voting on an amendment to change $11,565,000 to $11,665,000.
Yep.
As follows, the increase by 100,000 for Juliet Low, the deletion of the Parks Department storage building in the amount of 25,000, the reduction of the BOE modular classroom walkways from 625,000 to 400,000, and the addition of property acquisition in the amount of $250,000. That's the amendment you're voting on.
Can I make an amendment?
Absolutely.
I'd like to offer.
Hmm?
Is it permissible for the same person that offered the original to amend it? I'd like to offer an all, another friendly mo, motion, amendment, I'm sorry, for 250,000 for the splash park.
Second.
Okay, all in favor? I'm going to do this by roll call?
Yes.
Yes.
No.
Yes.
No.
No.
Yes.
No, that fails. Okay. Now I have an amendment I'd like to make to this, which is to reduce. I'm sorry, I just need to get into here. The repairs to various town parks from 150,000 to 50,000, so the price level does not change on this.
Second.
All in favor?
Can, is there discussion?
No, discussion.
I am going to advocate right now, and I'm going to invoke the name of Mr. David, who is in, in really an advocate for our ballparks and fields, and they are in bad repair.
It's not changing that.
They desperately need that.
Not changing that.
So this parks piece that you're, that will not touch, it will not touch all of our parks?
There's a separate line for the ballparks?
There is, but all of our parks are in pretty bad shape, so I don't know if.
It doesn't touch the playground renovation or the ball field renovation. It's just repairs to various town parks.
Okay.
It's like a sneaky move, but all the parks need attention, and it should stay at 150 and add the 100 to it. That's what it should do, because all the parks, North and South End, needs attention, and it shouldn't be ignored.
It's not just there, it's everywhere.
Okay, so we're voting on that amendment?
I'm sorry, what was the amount of your amendment?
I'm just removing, going from 150,000 to improvements for various parks, changing that to 50,000, so then the amount that we're bonding would not change. So it's to save taxpayers money.
Thank you.
Okay. All in favor of that amendment? Mr. Kadim?
No.
Mr. Young?
Uh. Yes.
I'm sorry.
How much did you take in total from that?
A hun, I'm sorry?
Hundred thousand?
It's to take 100,000 from the various parks?
No. Yes.
Yes.
No.
I vote yes, but the motion fails. Okay?
Mr. Harden?
Mr. Harden didn't vote.
Oh, I'm sorry, Mr. Harden?
No.
Okay, still fails. Okay, now we're back to increasing this to $11,665,000 for various public improvements in the CIP. So we're going to vote on that?
And this include, I'm sorry, point of clarification, this includes the amendments Mr. Chase suggested, the 100,000 for Juliet Low.[1708.11]
Yes.
Correct, okay.
Okay. Mr. Kadim?
Yes.
Mr.?
Yes.
Mr. Young?
Yes. No.
Can I ask a question? What's the implication to the overall budget if this passes?
During debate.
This is, we're done with debate, I'm sorry.
It's 100,000 dollars difference.
It's 100,000 dollars more in debt.
Yes.
Ms. Manis?
Yes.
And I vote yes, the motion passes seven to one. Okay, the next thing is the bonding for that ordinance. Is there an amendment, I'm sorry, first we need to take this off the table?
We voted on all the amendments, have we voted on the main question?
You just did.
Didn't we just vote on the main question? We just voted on the main question. The next thing is we need to take off, no, I'm, yes, we need, since we hadn't addressed this before, we need to take off the table the ordinance authorizing the issuance of 11,565,000 dollars in bonds of the town to meet the appropriation for various public improvements in the capital improvement program for fiscal year 2016 and 17, impending issuance thereof, the making of temporary borrowings for such purpose placed on the table during meeting. So I do need this to come off the table. Is there a motion to take this off the table?
Motion, take it off.
Second, all in favor?
Aye.
All not, all opposed? Okay, is there a motion to amend this so it would be 11,665,000?
I'll make the motion to amend it.
Second.
Okay, all in favor of amending?
Aye. Aye.
All opposed? So that passes eight to zero, the motion to amend? No, that was just the amendment to amend it. Now we're going to vote on the entire ordinance, okay, the main ordinance here. This will be a roll call vote, we need seven votes to pass it. Okay, Mr. Kadim?
Yes.
Mr. Harden?
Yes.
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 Yes, motion passes eight to zero. Okay, thank you very much.
Thank you, Mitzi.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Okay, now we're going to 7.62. I believe, Mr. Harden, is there a motion to modify the agenda to address the EMS funding?
No, no, you, Madam Chairman, you need, you need to go back to item six at this point.
Oh, I'm sorry, you're right, we'll come back to that. Or is there a motion to waive the, to waive the rules, to?
Yeah, motion to wa- to waive the rules, to move to, was it seven?
To add, well, it's not on there, so to add EMS funding?
To add EMS funding to it.
To what?
To the agenda.
To the agenda, please.
Okay, is there a second? Okay. Mr. Harden, is, oh, is there a second?
Second.
Okay, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye, all opposed?
Aye for discussion.
We're just waiving the rules to move.
Yeah, aye.
Just, just so, just so you're clear for the record, what are you?
I'm sorry, we aren't, we're just adding the item for discussion.
You're adding what item?
We're just adding an item to discuss and pass EMS and to consider resolutions regarding EMS funding.
Okay.
Okay, so that was added.
Okay, no, no, I think you need a motion or something, a resolution. Then you need to have something to discuss.
Yes.
Which is?
Okay, Mr. Harden, do you have a resolution?
The resolution, authorizing amendments and transfers in the EMS budget for the fiscal year 2016, 2017. Town council revisions. The use of fund balance, to reduce it to 187,019. Payroll, to reduce it to 72,019. And the capital outlay, to reduce it to 115. Therefore, resolve the town council of the town of Stratford hereby authorizes the financial department, our director, to transfer funds between various departments and to appropriate available revenues as shown in the exhibit A attached and be made part of the resolution.
Okay, thank you, is there a second for the resolution?
Do you have a copy we can look at, because if you're making a transfer of unused balances, you might be subject to 6.2.5 again.
Is there a second to the resolution?
Second.
Okay, is there a discussion?
I have a question.
Ms. Manis?
Through the chair, to the EMS chairman, I want to give you an opportunity to speak about why these changes are made. What they, what impact they're going to have to EMS and to people's services and what they're going to mean to positions and/or things that are currently in place.
Number one, I don't believe that this will have an impact on the functioning of EMS. They currently have four paid supervisors who work the same scheduled shift. I actually did some research and, you know, I was, I contacted the EMS for about a month and during the daytime, they had all four supervisors working and then the evening time, they had barely any supervisors working. They currently have 32% of the members, I think, are volunteers and the other are paid. So again, I don't think that this will have any effect on them. I believe that they're not using the supervisors up to the, their effectiveness as far as time wise. I think they should split them around so that they have supervisors to cover almost every shift. They have, I believe, four paid and about eight volunteer supervisors.
Through the chair, if I could ask a follow-up question?
Yes.
And I think this would go to the CAO. I don't know if EMS can do this. Who directs the director with regards to the suggestions from the EMS committee like Mr. Harden made that shifts should be staggered? Who makes that final call and who would then, who would he bring that complaint to or that, that, that efficiency observation?
I mean, that would, that would come through me, through the organizational chart, which we currently have in place right now.
Have you heard that? Are you working on it?
I have, I've not heard that yet. I'm happy to have specific conversations if you'd like to go forward with this.
Actually, my concerns were made to Mr. Larry Cecarelli, who then addressed EMS, what my concerns regarding the scheduling and, you know, the unavailability of supervisors there. So my concerns were made known to Mr. Cecarelli, who did, then did address EMS.
That, that would make sense because he is the public safety director. Go through that, so.
Was there any resolution to what you suggested? Asking the question, man.
I'm sorry, I didn't, I could not hear you, Ms. Manis.
I said I'm asking the question through the chair to Mr. Harden, was there a resolution to your issue?
Yes, Councilman Harden and I did speak of that and a bunch of other issues as well and that was addressed with the staffing and I was assured that the staffing setup and vis a vis management was based on volume of use. So that there was a more heavy need for supervisors doing a heavier volume timeframe and they're in place, you know, based on that. You know, unless you do a time management study, you know, I, I can't comment whether the information provided from the director was accurate or not, but that's the answer I got. So I did, I did employ Councilman Harden's suggestions, yes.
Thank you, Mr. Leclerc has a question.
I just have a couple of questions or comments. The first is, the, the resolution cites Town Charter section two, 6.2.5, which has to do with transfer of funds, unused balances appropriated for one purpose to another. That section also mandates that items not take, not be voted on until there's a, one week's public notice, that's the first point. The second is, and looking at the actual transfers, I'm a bit confused because you're reducing, it looks like, regular payroll by 72,000 and capital outlay contingency by 115,000 with a note that you're moving the 115,000 dollars to CEP, whatever that refers to. But you're also reducing revenues somehow to the department. So I'm not quite sure what's being proposed, because if you're, if you're doing a 6.2.5 transfer, you cannot do that this evening. And I'm not sure how you're reducing revenues to the department. If that's a transfer to another department, how are revenues going to be reduced to the ambulance department? They're making the same calls, but with one less supervisor, that's what I'm not quite following here.
Mr. Leclerc, can I?
And what the transfer is to CEP.
I, I was in the EM, yeah, I was in the EMS meeting and it seemed, for one thing, this is, these are just modifications to the proposed budget. Okay, so it's, so the, the budget proposed was very optimistic in terms of revenues. So that's why the revenues are being reduced. And then there are two items being modified. One is delaying the purchase of a new ambulance for a year and one is not filling a supervisor's position that has been vacant for, for quite a long time.
So you're not doing any transfer of funds under 625 to various departments? These are all transfers within the department or an adjustment within the department?
Madam Chairman?
Yeah, I think that's right.
So then maybe the resolution is often referencing section 625, which by its own.
I think that's right.
Doesn't allow that.
Okay, otherwise it's fine?
I'm sorry?
Otherwise it's fine?
I, I, well, I won't, I will tell you that the words you're using are fine, whether the numbers are correct. I'm not going to comment on the financial implications of this. I mean, I could tell you.
I have a question.
Okay, yes, Ms. Antezzo?
Perhaps Mr. Tim Niack could answer this or Mr. Cecarelli, I don't know. Isn't it true that these monies are not coming out of town funds? In other words, apparently you would seem to be saving money, but you're not. It's not coming out of taxpayers' money, it comes out of the fees, if I'm not mistaken.
Yes, the expenses that are paid, as enterprise account, comes out of the revenue that's derived from services.
Okay, so actually making any of these cuts would not present any saving for the town? It's coming out of their revenues.
It's not a town savings, it's a individual budgetary savings, considering that's kind of a business within itself.
Yes, so I, I don't see why we would do that. It doesn't make any sense. If somebody can explain it to me, fine.
I think we, yes, Mr. Young?
Couple of questions to the chair, I'm not even sure, David or Larry or whoever. The staff position you want to get rid of, it is something that's unfilled at this time.
Yeah, and it's, it's, yeah, it's been unfilled, so.
Okay, so why, why would they be coming up there in the comments and asking us not to take this away? You know, I'm just.
If there was a need for it, I believe that it would have been filled and, and they, they continue to function appropriately. So, I, I mean, I'm not dismantling, I'm just taking away something that they don't need.
Right.
So.
And then with the ambulance itself? Who works on the ambulances? Does public work?
They do and they also go outside. The ambulance that they're concerned about is the, I was told is the second oldest active ambulance in the state of Connecticut, 17 years old. So they're concerned about that one, so this one that's set up for acquisition is going to replace that one.
If, if I may, in the, actually, the EMS funding committee, Mike the chief himself stated on record that he'd be willing to forfeit the ambulance. So I bet was present.
Don't, don't they look at these things and say, you know, the average lifespan of an ambulance is this many years and we should be passing, you know, playing this?
They try to do that, but Councilman Harden is correct that that comment was made by Director Louise, so. And I've had a discussion today in anticipation of this tonight and I, I gave him the same direction. If that was the council's direction, you're going to have to live with that.
Mr., I'm sorry, that was the council's direction?
Yes.
We, the town.
I'm sorry, Mr. Harden? No, okay. Mr. Chase, and then.
Yes, through you, Madam Chairman, to Councilman Harden, why do you want to eliminate an ambulance?
At this time, Stratford EMS is certified by the state to have seven ambulances.
I'm sorry, how many?
Seven, I believe.
Okay.
And they barely, they, they have trouble staffing the ones that they have. And in the past, we've had new vehicles and they've sat in and when new vehicles don't get put in the rotation, you know, it leads to vehicle failure. And you would assume that because it, it's not on the road that it will fail less, but again, they, they, I don't believe that they use, to my knowledge and what I've been told is that they barely use the ones that they have as far as it, so to get one that probably will sit, and they recently just purchased an ambulance, I don't think that it's a necessity right now. So that's why it's there.
You know, and what was the, oh.
Oh, I just had a comment, I'm sorry.
Yes, go ahead.
I just wanted to make sure that in, in, and I'm fully aware and I, I agree with Councilman Harden, we did have these conversations, so I can substantiate them. I think the discussion was they had just had acquired ambulance and we had to wait a year to leapfrog and look at the acquisition again next year. I think they could survive a year, I'm just being completely honest. I would not wait too much longer though, that 17-year-old ambulance is probably going to, you know, pass away very soon. But if they had to, they could wait another year.
What, through you, Madam Chairman, then, to, what would be the effect if tomorrow that ambulance broke down and was unusable? You know, do we have enough ambulances at that point?
That goes to Mr. Harden?
Yes, they would have enough ambulances at that point. You know, I understand your concern and with a good heart, I would not take something away from them that was needed. And again, you know, Mike Louise himself said, stated that this is something that they could wait another year for. And I believe that if he didn't say that, then I would have a harder time doing it. But because he willingly made that noticeable and he made that comment, it made me comfortable with saying, okay, no problem. And so they've continued to function. I don't know how often that older ambulance is on the road and I don't know if it's, I don't know what the condition of it is. I believe it's probably the 804 or the old 8010, I'm not sure. So I don't know what the condition of it is. And again, they do have additional ambulances, so if one, if you look at it, I believe that there's two ambulances, bare minimum, on the road per shift. I know during Memorial Time, they had some difficulty scheduling people to the ambulances. They, they had problem getting people to work on them, so I don't know what the coverage was. But I'm told that there's usually two ambulances per shift, so the other ones do sit there. That's what I was informed, I don't know if that's correct or not.
Okay, through you, Madam Chairman, second, last question for Mr. Harden then. As I'm sure you are aware, we've been getting, well, I don't know about the other members, but I got a number of calls last night and this morning regarding this issue from primarily volunteers. What is, what is their concern? I don't understand their concern, I understand why you want to do it. Still not clear to me why they're in opposition to what you'd like to propose.
I, I have to be honest with you, when I was a member of EMS, which I was from 94 until 2013, anytime public, the town decided to take something from us, we all were against it. Because that's what we knew, they were taking something from us that was probably important to us and we were led to believe elsewise, but then when we really sat and thought about it, we were like, well, we can't follow everyone, what's, what's the meaning behind this? Do we really need the ambulance or we don't need the ambulance? And there was a point where we had to back off. You know, when you volunteer for almost any organization and I think when people decide that they want to take something from you, I think you're going to fight for it. But again, clearly this is a case where, you know, as I said, Mike said it was okay to do and he voluntarily said that. So they're not in need of it right now. And I think if they're not in need of it right now, we can hold off on it. It's not dismantling, it's not putting them in a position to where they're not going to be able to function. They have a total of probably 12 vehicles over there, maybe more. And I don't know what their capacity are, you know, what the capacity of those vehicles are and what kind of, you know, functionality they have, but they have a surplus of vehicles there. And in my years of EMS, we've never been to a point where there was no coverage. We do have mutual aid agreements and if something was to happen, which has happened in the past years ago when we did not have, you know, proper maintenance on the vehicles, there was AMR Nelson who provided service for us when the trucks were not functioning. And the fact that we do have mutual aid agreements with other towns, that even if we had one ambulance up, there were times where that, that one ambulance would go to another town and our town would be left uncovered and the mutual aid ambulance would come in to cover our town.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you, that was very clear, I appreciate it.
Thank you, I, I just want, I just want to answer Ms. Antezzo's question, give her a little more information. You asked the reason why we are messing with this budget at all. And the reason was that in 2015, in FY15, there was no money. In, in their budget, they had zero dollars for going into their own fund balance. In FY16, there was 135,000 dollars budgeted to use from their fund balance. And in the mayor's proposed budget for FY17, to balance the budget, they would have, they would have to go into their fund balance to the tune of 390,000 dollars. So it was to decrease.
Are you on the budget page or the?
I'm on the budget page, I'm just, I'm just trying to answer your question. Your question to Mr. Harden was along the lines of, why are we doing this at all? Why are we messing with their budget? And it was so, is to avoid them going into. And it was so, is to avoid them going into their fund balance as deeply as the mayor proposed.
Is it their fund balance?
It is their fund balance. At some point, it won't.
As a chair of the WPCA, I'm very familiar with fund balance mechanations, that's all I'm going to say. But the thing is, here's what's bothering me, these people are paying for it themselves. Why are we telling them they can't have it?
I think the, you have to understand that their fund balance is what funds the delta, or the difference between their revenue and their expenses. So if the delta is always negative, sooner or later, that fund balance is going to disappear. Then the town's going to have to come in and support economically the EMS.
Exactly.
And so if they have injuries, you know, wrongful termination claims, all those things, then we'll be liable for it if they don't have the fund there to sustain it.
Yeah, you're talking about something that might happen in the future, that's all. You know, as it stands now, they have the money for the person that they want to hire, and they have the money for the ambulance.
Okay.
And I'm questioning why we're trying to prevent something, an enterprise organization from spending their own money.
Mr. Kadine, you had a question?
I had a quick question. Gentlemen in the back, would you come, I had a question about this whole situation. You work with EMS, yes? Okay, and you feel comfortable with all that you're hearing, though, just as a person? Okay, I'm just, I want to make sure that we have a better understanding of what we're doing. I just asked a question.
Okay, all in favor of the amendment? Of the resolution that Mr. Harden proposed? I'm sorry, I can't hear you. No, I'm sorry, no, I reversed myself. All in favor of the resolution? We'll do a roll call vote, Mr. Kadine? Mr. Kadine?
Based upon all the information I was given here, if it is accurate, I'll say yes.
Okay, Mr. Harden?
Yes.
No.
Mr. Llewellyn?
I'll pass as well.
No.
Okay, Chair votes yes. Mr. Chase?
Sorry, Dave, no.
Mr. Llewellyn?
Um, no.
Okay, the motion fails, which I think means that the EMS does not currently have a budget, that the FY sixteen budget continues. Okay, section, the FY sixteen means that the EMS fund does not have a budget currently, and their FY sixteen budget will continue, as is. Same thing as if we did not pass the town's budget, the FY sixteen budget would be our default.
What?
No, you're saying no?
That's not, that's not right.
We have not passed a budget for EMS.
We didn't pass, I mean, we just rescinded EMS as a whole budget.
No, 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 we haven't rescinded their budget. We have not passed an FY seventeen budget for EMS. This was the FY seventeen budget for EMS with an amendment.
We could probably pass it without the amendment, but that's just based on the sixteen.
Point of clarification.
Okay.
We voted on the amendment.
Okay.
Hi, Mr. Florrick and company. Clarify here, we voted on the amendment.
That's what was, that was, that's all that was being introduced, right now.
So we have not yet voted on EMS's budget?
Here's the question I have.
We will schedule a special meeting for this budget, for the EMS budget before June thirtieth.
Madam Chair.
Yes.
This is an enterprise fund, they have their own budget, is that true? They're an enterprise fund like the WPCA, WPCA passes its own budget.
Yeah, but we, as a council, are the people who pass the budget for this enterprise fund, like Short Beach Commission also, like the Short Beach Enterprise Fund.
May I, just for the record, just add a few points, real quick, I just, I'm getting communication from Director Louise. They staff three to four ambulances during the day and two in the evening. Three of the seven that are actually being utilized right now are in an elder state. And he, the statement again is that the supervisors are staggered and reflective of workload and volume.
Okay, thank you. Okay, we will have a special meeting before June thirtieth.
I'm sorry, you said they're staggered and they're fine, where would this other supervisor that's been missing?
We, we're done with this discussion, though, let's, we need to move on. Okay, questions to Mayor or staff, question to Economic Development Director?
I have a question.
Yes, is the Economic Development Director here?
No, the Economic Development Director is not here.
Was she invited here?
Yes, she was.
Is she?
She's unable to attend.
Will she attend other meetings of ours?
I'm sure she will, yes.
Ms. Manis?
There's a number of questions. First question is, mayor's calendar, when will he be visiting Ornoke Village? The people up there have been asking and requesting a meeting, they'd like one as soon as possible.
Point of order, Madam Chairman, I'd like to address that directly to Ms. Manis.
Yes.
Ms. Manis, Mr. Llewellyn and I have been working on this for the past three weeks, okay? That letter to the editor was not helpful. The fact of the matter is, this Wednesday, representatives from the Ornoke Village Board of Directors, Mr. Llewellyn and myself will be meeting with town officials to discuss all of the issues that you're referring to. So I hope that answers your question.
Fine, I can explain to members of my church when, when they're coming, that's great. And two, is there a?
Is there something I can, through you, Madam Chairman, is there something I can help you with in the Tenth District, Madam Chairman?
No, that's all I want to know.
Okay.
Is there a cost for the mayor's trip to the MetroCog?
No, it's being paid for by MetroCog.
Is there something funny? There's nothing funny.
Okay, next, is there another question?
Oh, yes, there is. Why are we charging for Public Works when the highway people go out and they are being charged eight hours for work, and then a half hour for administrative costs, back to the WPCA, when we transfer over five hundred and sixty thousand dollars for Public Works from the WPCA already? Why are they charging back to WPCA for when the highways go out to do work, and the casters and things like that?
All right, one more, start, start from the beginning. The Public Works is charging back to WPCA for work performed?
Public Works charges back to WPCA for any work they perform on the sewers, or any time they go out with the machine, they charge up to eight hours of work, and then a half hour for administrative charges. Why? Because we already transferred five hundred and sixty thousand dollars.
I'd be pretty confident there's an MOU in place to organize that entire procedure you just outlined.
Will you get back to her on that?
Yeah.
Offline? Okay. Yeah.
Thanks.
Okay, other questions to?
That's it.
Mayor or staff, and then we will ask Mark Dillon to come up, if he's still here, to talk about the Stratford Army Engine Plant. Are there other questions, though, before we have Mr. Dillon give us a status update? Nope?
Good evening, Mark Dillon, Chief of Staff. As far as Engine Plant goes, the DEEP and Army are still working on a remediation plan and agreement for the title flats in the, in the river. That is the one remaining hurdle before the developers can move forward with taking the property over and beginning the process of redevelopment. DEEP and the Army have been sort of disagreeing on the title flats for several months, they brought in the Army Corps of Engineers to sort of broker a deal between the two agencies. They've come up with a few proposals, which they've sent over to DEEP. Unfortunately, the gentleman who is spearheading that for the Army Corps passed away unexpectedly two weeks ago, that has set them back a little bit. But as it stands now, DEEP is putting together a meeting with the developers, Army, and the Army Corps, to agree upon a remediation plan.
Okay, any follow-up questions? Mike, I have one, when do you, I mean, we've been hearing for months about the remediation plan, when do you think it might be, that this project may be moving into its next phase?
We are asking, obviously, to get this done ASAP. It's been frustrating trying to move multiple bureaucracies to an agreement, but we're hopeful with the Army Corps's information that this will happen, you know, in a matter of weeks, and happy to keep you updated on that.
Okay, thank you very much.
Madam Chairman, I have a question for Mr. Dillon. You mentioned the Army Corps of Engineers and DEEP, and you also mentioned the developer. Is the developer going to be involved in the cleanup or the remediation at all?
They have not decided whether or not they themselves would do it, or the Corps, they'll probably be, do a cost analysis and to see which can do it for lower cost quicker. At that time, they'll make that decision.
I'd like to ask a question about your crystal ball, how many years will it be to get this onto the tax rolls?
It is hard to say, there's a due diligence period for the developer once they reach the agreement, but my best estimate is a year or two before it actually hits the tax rolls.
Oh, okay. Thank you. Any other questions? No.
Thank you.
Let's go to section seven point one, we need a roll call vote required for final passage, this is the ordinance amending chapter fourteen of the Code of the Town of Stratford to require that Finance Director publish town revenue and expenditure reports and a list of non-payroll dispersments on the town's website on a monthly basis.
Madam Chairman?
Yes.
I would move the second reading of the above ordinance and title ordinance to be dispensed with as copies thereof have been received by all council members and the foregoing being hereby approved effective thirty days from passage. This is something that's happening now, but we wanted to codify it.
Okay, thank you. Is there a second?
I have a question.
Yes.
I noticed that it's now sponsored by you, Madam Chair, and also, and Ms. Antezzo continues on, this originally was introduced into forum by Mr. Gresko, now Representative Gresko and former District Two Councilman Mark Dumont, I'm wondering why their names were removed?
Because they're no longer on the council, because they resigned.
But they originally brought forward the ordinance, wouldn't they keep authorship?
Yeah, but they can't, I believe they can't sponsor it unless they're currently on the council.
Okay.
Okay, there's a second, okay, all, okay, this is a roll call vote, Mr. Kadine, do you vote, I or no?
Aye.
Mr.? Aye.
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 Aye, the motion, the ordinance passes eight to zero, the motion passes eight to zero. Building demolition and site alterations at thirty-seven oh four Main Street, is there a motion to table this?
Madam Chairman, I would move item seven point two.
Okay, to table.
Resolve that DEEP pickensons construction for building demolition and site alterations at thirty-seven oh four Main Street B and is hereby approved as the low bidder in the amount of forty-nine thousand five hundred dollars.
Second.
So are you motioning to table, or no? You're just moving the motion?
I'm moving, I'm moving the, I'm moving the issue.
Okay. Okay, discussion?
Just clarification, three thirty-seven is what, what is, what is that building they talking about tearing down?
I can tell you, it's on the corner of Windsor and Main, next to the Windsor Package Store.
Windsor and Main?
I live on Windsor Avenue, I, all I can say is it's a very expensive parking lot.
Very expensive. I just, I'm going.
And your recommendation is that we get rid of it, right?
They bought it.
No, I'm saying, your recommendation is that we get rid of it, right?
Can I get some background on this?
Thank you.
No, they got to tear it down.
The background on this is that a building was purchased by the town, I forget the purchase amount, I don't know if I knew it, it's for about three hundred thousand or so, if anybody can correct me on that.
What was that?
The building that was purchased.
Three hundred and thirty thousand.
It's three hundred and thirty?
Yes.
Thousand?
Yes.
So now the town would like to, there's a, Mr. Chase has a resolution to demolish that building and have site alterations to develop, I think it's eighteen parking spaces.
That's correct, and just as clarification and correction, it's not my resolution, it's the town's resolution.
Okay, it's a town's resolution.
But I have made the motion to approve.
Okay.
And it probably should be noted, if you've been down in that area, especially, you know, Thursday, Saturday, Friday, Saturdays, it is a parking nightmare that's affecting the businesses down there, therefore, I'm not, you know, the town probably shouldn't have done this, it should have been done privately, but the fact of the matter is, we now own the thing, so either we do something with it, or we just let it molder there.
Right.
Okay, any other discussion?
So in essence, we throwing away three hundred and thirty thousand dollars.
Well, the other alternative, of course, is selling the property.
Well, selling the property would be a better deal, I would think, because we throwing away money by tearing the building down, that's just my overview.
Okay, so I'm going to do a roll call vote on this, Mr. Kadine?
No.
Mr. Young?
Yes.
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 Pass.
Mr. Harden?
Yes.
Ms. Manis?
Yes.
Okay, I vote yes. Motion passes seven to one. Okay, next thing is the change order for the library project.
This is all yours, Wally, make the motion.
Showing some more love, huh?
Yeah.
This is, you show this is mine?
Yep, you're our library guy.
Really?
Yeah.
Only, is there a motion?
He's trying to make the motion.
Say it again?
No, he's asking if you're making the motion.
Would anybody like to make a motion on this?
First things first, I'm head of the parking rec, but I'm, I don't know where we get.
Well, we thought you had interest in libraries, seriously.
No, I do love libraries, my wife is part of it.
Right, that's why we thought you might want to make the motion.
Upgrade magnetic, magnet hold open for gates and tie to fire alarm systems initially approved during building needs and community meetings on March twenty-first, yeah, I like that, resolve that, need glasses, Thompson, Holly, Holly Patterson, B and hereby approve for the Stratford Public Library Project Upgrade, HVAC and lighting, magnet hold open doors, gates tied to the fire alarm system for the amount of seven million dollars, seven hundred and five, seven hundred, seven, seven thousand five hundred and one sixty-three.
Second.
Okay, all in favor?
Aye.
All opposed? Okay, thank you. The motion passes eight to zero. Committee appointments, there'll be no action taken on the beautification committee unless I hear otherwise, public safety?
I have a question about that. No, no, because you already took care of that other one, no, no.
Yes.
I'm fine, thank you.
Madam Chairman? I'd like to make a motion to approve a new member, electorate member to the Public Safety Committee, Mr. Duffy's been endorsed by both David and myself, he'd make an excellent addition to the committee, and I would so move.
Okay, thank you, is there a second?
Second.
Okay, all in favor?
Aye.
All opposed?
Madam Chair.
He's appointed eight to zero, building needs?
Madam Chairman?
We moved on, there, there is, there is someone for beautification committee that was taken off, that has submitted a resume, is that?
Oh, that's later on.
Madam Chairman, that's, that's coming later on in the, it's later on on the agenda. Thank you, Madam Chairman, I would move the appointment of Dan Semph as a member of the Building Needs Committee. Dan's been an active member, in particular with the Stratford High Subcommittee Group, and would ask the council to endorse his appointment.
I'll second, and also like to add that Dan comes from the roofing industry, and he's been instrumental in slotting and doing the analysis of the various school roofing projects over the last four years.
Okay, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
All opposed? Okay, that passes eight to zero. Finance and Claims Committee, I simply have to appoint a chair, that chair will be Vin Chase. Tabled items, seven point five point one, I would recommend keeping on the table since our Finance Director is not here currently. So now we're moving all the way to seven point seven point one of the agenda, Stratford Housing Partnership, that's on the Stratford Housing Partnership, that's on the table. I'd like to keep that on the table. 7.7.2, Commission on Aging, Mr. Chase?
Yes. Now we're moving. Bear with me.
We weren't expecting that.
I know. I wasn't.
Yes, Madam Chairman, through extensive discussions with the Director of the Baldwin Center, we have finally cleaned up, if you will, the membership on the Commission on Aging. I'm going to give this to the council clerk so she can update her records, but we're making the following recommendation. In addition.
Wait, stop for one second. Thank you. Go ahead.
These are new members to the Commission on Aging. Elizabeth Perlman Cole, replacing Mary Ann Cimatory. Loretta Krasinski, replacing Dolores Zimmer. Otis Fisher, replacing Patricia Shaheen. Sandra Fisher, replacing Linda Fernandez. And one, we have one, two vacancies for the nonprofit representation to the commission, and that would be Mary Samino for the voluntary agency designation. She's with Ronald McDonald House. The, the directory of membership on all of our committees and commissions has been, will, has to be updated, and I have the new update here for the council clerk. I so move, Madam Chairman.
Thank you. Is there a second?
I'll second.
Okay, all in favor?
Aye.
All opposed? The motion passes eight to zero. It's for the Commission on Aging. Thank God, that's been on the agenda since.
Forever.
January. So Korski Memorial Airport Noise Abatement Committee, I believe I simply need to appoint a chair. That will be Richard Diedrickson. Okay? Ethics Commission, we're going to leave that on the table.
Jacqueline.
For the last appointment. I haven't.
Okay, okay, okay.
Yeah, I'd love to. Disability Review Board, that's on the table now. We're keeping it on the table. Financial Advisory Committee, is there a motion to take this off the table?
I move we take this off the table, Madam Chairman.
Okay, is there a second?
Second.
Okay, all in favor of taking it off the table?
Aye.
All opposed? That passes eight to zero. Okay, Mr. Chase?
Madam Chairman, this is something I think the entire council can take credit for. The Financial Advisory Committee was set up many years ago and frankly has never been, the membership has never been filled. The purpose of this committee is to, in effect, help the council monitor the town's spending, spending patterns, if you will. We've done an extensive search and we feel that we've found three individuals that can help us in that effort, and this will particularly be helpful when we start the next budget. So the names that we'd like to put forward for the Financial Advisory Committee are Don Petrimas of Stratford. Don has a financial background. Sandra Zalik, who's a CPA. And Gavin Forrester, who also has a financial background. I so move, Madam Chairman.
Okay, thank you. Is there a second?
Second.
Okay, all in, discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
All opposed? The motion passes eight to zero. Ordinances and resolutions, this next one has simply to do with, they, they need to have notification that the council is aware that, that the grant writer is applying for a grant. So, so simply, there's, the motion should be that the council is cognizant of the town's grant application and contract to the U.S. Department of Justice Bureau of Justice Assistance for funds to address law enforcement and crime prevention and intervention within the town of Stratford and to that it hereby authorizes, directs and powers the Mayor John Harkins or is designated to execute and file such an application with the U.S. Department of Justice Bureau of Justice Assistance to provide such additional information and to execute and administer such other contracts and documents as may be necessary to execute this program. Is there a motion for this?
I so move, Madam Chairman.
Okay, is there a second?
Second.
Okay, discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
All opposed? Motion passes eight to zero. 8.2, this is a resolution and we can either table this or get this done.
Yeah, Madam Chairman, I have a number of questions on this. It's late and we have more important things to do at the moment. I would move we table this for now.
Second.
Okay. All in favor of tabling?
Aye.
All opposed? Okay. New business, special election to be conducted to fill the vacancies on the town council for Council District Two and Council District Five.
Madam Chairman?
Yeah.
I would move resolve that the certifications of the town clerk for a special election on October 13th, 2016, to fill the vacancies on the town council for District Two and District Five B and is hereby approved. I have something to say regarding how we got there, so we'll need a second.
Second.
Thank you.
Discussion.
Madam Chairman, the chairman of the town committee, uh, town, excuse me, town council and myself had extensive conversations for the last two days with the town attorney's office, the town clerk's office and the registrar's office. We were in a 150-day window and we wanted to have this, you know, as convenient as possible. The problem is there are many religious holidays in October and this is the only day we could land on to satisfy the Secretary of State's office. As a result of this, October 13th, 2016, as the special election, the nominations for these two seats would have to happen in the window June 23rd to June 30th. If there's a primary, that would happen on August 18th. That's just for information. The motion is just to set the special election date.
Okay, thank you. Mr. Young?
Just a point, reference the first Tuesday, or second Tuesday in October is the 11th.
Yes. It's Rosh Hashanah.
It's Rosh Hashanah.
Oh, so that's why.
Yeah.
Right, that's why it's the 13th.
Yeah.
And then there are some other religious, Jewish, religious holidays on those Tuesdays, every Tuesday.
Yeah, I'm just thinking, I haven't, not the wrong, I don't know. Weird.
No, this is a Thursday.
Madam Chair.
Yes, I'm sorry.
Can I ask why this, can I just ask why this wasn't combined with the manpower that's already going to be available for the presidential election?
Good question. I'll answer that for the town attorney. That was definitely a consideration.
We wanted.
And there's an issue of co-mingling the federal ballots and the municipal ballots. So if we were to do that instead, it would involve having people from those districts go in, vote for president and then go into, vote for president and then their state people. And then go, they would have to go into a different room or be at a different location and get a different ballot. And for the registrar voter's office, it was a logistical nightmare. There were questions of whether they could get enough checkers for it and to actually run this, and people would think. But that was our first impulse was to have it then because that's when voter turnout. These days, I mean, just the timing of everything, it makes it complicated.
Okay.
But these, so these dates were cleared with the Secretary of State's office. But there were other dates considered. Okay. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
All opposed? Okay, so the date is set for October 13th. The dog park, I think.
Madam Chairman?
Yes.
Is, Mr. Kadim earlier in the evening mentioned the dog park. Mr. Kadim, is this something currently before the Parks and Rec Committee?
Yes, it's actually been there for a long time.
So it's still there.
We approved it, we approved it, I think, a couple of years ago. And, and I think this company called Star, who actually does train the dogs at the dog park, had some movement to where they, they took, they took the ability from us to put the park where we originally voted for it to go to the council. And what happened is, at the last meeting, we found there was a conflict of entrance because they actually do the training for the dog in the location that we're supposed to put the dog park. All we simply have to do is say during the hours that they do the training, they can close the park. But we should not have the town, by and large, not have a place for their dogs. That would be wrong.
Okay, Madam Chairman? I don't know if any other, I'm sure everyone did if they've checked their email today. There's a proposal put forth by the group for a dog park. I would recommend, I don't think we need a motion to do this, or maybe we do, to refer this back to Parks, have them analyze this proposal and then report back to the council.
Okay, that's fine.
That's fine. I'm okay with that.
Okay, hopefully you can get that at the July agenda and get this really moving. Because I know there's a lot of interest and we need to make sure that's not just one group that holds a town hostage for that.
Thank you, Madam Chair, thank you.
Okay, potential sale of town property?
Miss, Madam Chairman? I am mystified, which I have no idea what this is.
Okay.
If someone in the town could just tell us what this is. Where is this place, first of all? Is it this house right here?
There's a yellow house, yeah, there's a yellow.
Part of the, the Stratford High Project?
I think originally the thought was to acquire it when it became for sale years ago. Right now, it's being used for legal storage. We have been approached about potentially selling the property. I didn't want to move on and have any conversation or have anything going on without bringing the discussion before the council, before I did that. I certainly wouldn't negotiate a price or anything like that without council approval. All I wanted to let you basically know is that we have received interest in the property right here, next to us. And if you allow me or authorize me, I would further engage.
All right, one, one question. Does this abut Stratford High School?
No.
Okay. I was just thinking in terms of if additional parking was needed for the high school, but it does not abut. And this would be back on the tax rolls, then, I assume?
The plan would be to put it back on the tax rolls.
Would it be commercial or residential? Would you know that?
It would be commercial.
Okay. I have no other questions.
Yes, Mr. Young?
Chris, I mean, through, through the chair. I'm just wondering why, and I'm not saying, I don't know why, but why are you dealing with this and not economic development?
Yeah. Because this was an initial, first, like, I believe if we move it forward, economic development would come and present the whole package or what the plan was. This was something I wanted to do out of, I want to say, extreme nature, presenting it in front of the council so there was no illusion that we were entering into, out of transparency. I wanted to move forward with this. And then if I get a number back, I can bring it in front of you and we can make the decision of whether we want to move forward for parking, whether the value is in putting this back on the tax rolls or what the town wants to do. Currently, it is housing the town attorney's legal documents.
So it's not a new office for the town attorney?
No, I would like to annex them there often. It crosses my mind, but no.
Okay, Mr. Kadim?
Yeah, the question, I think you pretty much answered it. So the building itself is a home? Is it a business? What is it?
It's currently storage.
I understand, but what was it?
It's a yellow, it's a little house.
A house.
It's a little yellow house.
Okay, but I mean, is the other houses next to it?
Yeah.
Like, you know, a row of houses? Because if you put a business next to my house, I wouldn't be happy about that.
Yeah, I think there's a, a plan to acquire all of them together.
Okay.
And that was, that's, that's what I've been told, so.
Okay, all together.
I, I just want to make sure that we are not favoring one group, one business over another or one entity over another in that if it was put on the tax rolls, that it would not be a special deal, that it would be somehow marketed?
Ah.
So others?
Yeah, no, I, I.
You know, I, I just worry about the process of having a deal with somebody.
Right. No, the organization which has approached me, I don't, I don't believe any other, any other vendor or anything like that would want to acquire this specific piece of property.
But it hasn't been on the market.
It has not been on the market.
Okay.
It is not currently on the market. We were approached.
Yeah.
The value of that land, the, the town will always have a 10, it's a very small piece of property. The town will always have a 10-foot easement into the front of the property, which creates a situation where it's basically in a budding property owner and the house, which is all which it currently houses. So the value really is for one particular business.
Okay, let's move on then. So are we giving him authority to have discussions?
I would move that we, I would move, do we need a motion, really? I mean, I thought this was just for our information. Could you still have to come back to us?
No, I still have to come back to you. This was for information purposes to let you know that I was going to engage.
Okay, Madam Chairman, I'd move forward.
Okay, fine. Okay, 9.4.1, Beautification Committee A. Ms. Manis, did you want to?
Yes, I'd like to resolve that Rita Sakim be hereby reinstated onto the beautification committee.
Second.
Okay, all in favor?
Aye.
All opposed? No action will be taken on 4.1B. 9.4.2, Arts Commission?
Madam Chairman, I would move resolve that we reappoint Erin McLaughlin of Stratford to the Arts Commission.
I'll second.
I'll second it, I'm sorry.
Okay.
I second it.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Oh, I'm sorry, discussion before this, discussion?
I have discussion regarding Arts Commission appointments and people who are on the Arts Commission and the resolution of the beer money and where it went and it was given away and it didn't come back. And this is a person who was on the commission, I believe, and voted to send this money. So have we received any information regarding the return of those funds before we begin reappointing people to give more money away at some point?
I think that's with the town attorney's office.
Madam Chairman, I'd like to point out something, though. We basically took away all their money this year. So from here on in, to assuage your concern, they have to come to us before they spend any money.
Okay.
Can I just, Madam Chair? You know.
Now, is, I'm sorry, Wally, no, and as far as the previous money, that's still an open question, Tina.
Right, I just, I, I, I would, I was hoping this would stay tabled only because there's just so many question marks.
It's not on the table?
Yeah, I know, and it's just, I'm surprised that we're moving on it, these are just-
Are you making a motion to table?
I would like to table this, all of them.
Is there a second?
I'd like to table 9.4.2, A, B, C, and D, until we have a clarification about that money.
Okay, all in favor of tabling?
Aye.
Okay, let me do a roll call vote, Wally, are you?
Aye, yes, clarification.
For tabling, wait.
Yep.
Okay, it's, wait, there was a second, it was David Harden seconded.
People are going to continue serving, it's just, we got to figure out what's going on before we start reappointing people.
I just want to point out, A is already passed.
No, we did not pass it, we didn't, I did not finish the vote there.
No, I did, but she moved to table.
Okay, so, aye?
Aye.
Aye.
Ms. Antezzo, are you moving?
No, no.
No.
Yes.
Yes, so the motion fails, five-three vote to table, okay, now?
Madam Chairman?
Now we go back to-
Yeah, I know, okay, I'll start over. Madam Chairman, I move that we reappoint Erin McLaughlin to the, excuse me, Arts Commission. Her term expired April 9th, 2016.
I second it.
I don't think we need to do this, but yeah, okay, all in favor of appointing Erin McLaughlin?
Madam Chairman?
Wait, that passes, all opposed to Erin McLaughlin being appointed?
If Mr. Chase will-
Yes or no?
I'm going to go with you, Mr. Chase, I'm going to take your word for it, all right, I'll vote you.
Okay, that passes eight to zero.
If it helps, Ms. Manus, I will help you find out where that money is, because I would, I would like to know myself. Madam Chairman, be resolved that we reappoint William Franz to the Arts Commission.
I'll second.
Okay, discussion, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
All opposed, that passes eight to zero.
Madam Chairman, I would move Ellen Cox be reappointed to the Arts Commission.
Okay, all in favor?
Second.
Oh, is there a second, I'm sorry?
Second.
Okay, all, discussion, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
All opposed?
Madam Chairman?
That passes eight to zero.
Madam Chairman, number D, there has, the recommendation is to appoint Paul Gianero to the unexpired term of Catherine DiCresenzo. Paul is currently an alternate, but is extremely active in all of the functions and is helpful. And Ms. DiCresenzo's had some problems attending meetings, so they'd like to put Paul on as a full member of the Arts Commission and to move Catherine DiCresenzo, because she does occasionally help out as an alternate member.
Okay, I think we can only do one at a time there, so we would appoint him as a full member, then we need to waive the rules, add, yeah.
Do we, okay, I move, I move Mike, Paul DiCresenzo to the Arts-
DiGianero?
DiGianero, sorry.
GiGianero?
GiGianero.
GiGianero.
Paul Gianario.
Is there a second?
I'll second.
Okay, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
All opposed?
Madam Chairman, I would move-
That passes eight to zero.
Madam Chairman, I move Catherine DiCresenzo as an alternate member to the-
No, you moved to waive the rules to add-
Okay, I moved to raise the rules to add an alternate for the Arts Commission.
Okay, is there a second?
Second.
Okay, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye, all opposed?
Madam Chairman, I would move Catherine DiCresenzo as an alternate member of the Arts Commission.
Okay, all, is there a second?
Second.
Okay, all in favor?
Aye.
All opposed? Okay, that passes eight to zero. 9.4.3, is there a motion to table those alternates?
Yes, Madam Chairman, I've moved to, no, we don't, no, let's just not take any action, that way we don't-
No, these are new ones, these are new.
I'd like to make a-
Wait a minute, 9.4.3, you said?
Yeah.
Aren't these, these are new appointments, this isn't on the table.
Oh, I didn't know we had anybody.
I have, I have a name we spoke about. I'd like to recommend Prez Palmer for the alternate position on the Board of Assessment Appeals for the vacated term of Richard Brown, expired March 14th, 2016.
Is there a second?
What was the name?
Prez Palmer.
Veteran with VFW.
Okay, Prez, P-R-E-Z.
Oh, Prez, okay.
Okay, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
All opposed? No opposition, okay, that goes eight to zero. Okay, Board of Zoning Appeals, 9.4.4.1?
I resolve, oh, I'm sorry.
Wait, no, no, Mr. Chase?
Madam Chairman, I would move, resolve that Janice Anderson be appoint, of Stratford, be hereby appointed an alternate member to the Board of Zoning Appeals, vacated the term, for the vacated term of Mary Young, which expires January 1, 2017.
Okay, is there a second?
I'll second.
Okay, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye, all opposed? Okay, motion passes eight to zero.
Excuse me, Madam Chairman, you missed an item, 9.4.3B.
I think we didn't have anyone.
I'm sorry, we did not, okay, is there a motion to table, 9.4.3B?
I've motioned to table.
Okay, is there a second? Okay, all in favor of tabling that?
Aye.
Aye.
Oh, I'm sorry, go ahead.
Okay, 9.4.4.2?
I'd like to resolve, I'd like to make a motion to resolve that of Paul Traveris be appointed a regular member of the zoning, the Board of Zoning Appeals, representing Planning District 2.
I second.
Council Districts 3 and 4, term of office, Emma Brooks, resigned, January 1st, 2018.
Is there a second? Okay, all in favor?
Can there be some discussion first?
Okay, discussion.
Can you give me some, some background on this guy, I mean, we're basically, we're appointing him to what is an elected position.
Right, did you not get his information? I don't, he forwarded information to me, that's why I would-
I didn't get it.
All right, then we should table it, I'll withdraw.
Well, what I'm saying-
Definitely.
I'd like to hear what Mr. Harden says, but he just left.
No, I mean, I know the gentleman, I know the gentleman for years, he's a retired police, I mean, retired fireman, he works in the community now, he's on Hamilton, you know where Hamilton was dealing with the houses and everything, in terms of the zoning board, so he's been active in our community for years, so he's a good guy to, you know, and Emma Brooks, he's separating, it's the same area she lives in, so it'll be a good guy to make that stand. But if you need, if you need it, I'm just telling you, he's a good guy, but, you know, if you want the information first, that's fine.
Okay, there was a motion, is there a motion to table this? What are we doing with this?
I'd make a motion, I'd make a motion to withdraw my nomination-
Okay.
With the expectation that resumes will be forwarded to the, to the entire council, and that they'll get to see-
Okay, so you're withdrawing the nomination, okay.
You should, he's, he's got the goods, and I think-
Is there a motion to table, then?
I'd make a motion to table.
Is there a second for that?
I'll second.
Okay, all in favor of tabling?
Aye.
Aye.
All opposed? Okay, that passes seven to zero. Getting-
No, that makes sense.
Inlands, Wetlands, and Watercourses Commission, this is the only thing that the council chair can do by his or herself. I am appointing Ron Hoydic, letting him continue on, the rest will be no action.
Before you do that, I wonder if you could table that, just so that we could look at it to make sure that it's not an incompatible office? I know he's already on ZBA.
Okay, and I could always do this simply by email, right, because this does not require council approval.
No, you have to communicate it with the council.
I can communicate, I can do that, okay, okay, then I will table that. Veterans Monument Preservation Commission for Academy Hill.
Wait a minute.
Can we get these done, guys? Yes.
Wait, now you've thrown me, Madam Chairman, we were on 9.4.5, Inland, Wetlands, Water Commission. You're saying that the count, that you have the sole authority to appoint the members to the Inland, Wetlands Commission? Clarification of the town attorney, is that correct?
Yes.
We'll look, we'll have to, we'll look at that, too, I don't have the code right here.
It was brought to my attention by a former town chair, and I looked it up. Not town, yeah.
Man, that's dangerous.
Maybe it is dangerous, maybe that needs to change.
Yeah, I would think so.
Yeah, you don't, you don't have a high school about to go sit before that commission.
Would I, can I, can I just share something really quick? I really do hope that Ron Hoydic can serve on this, only because we live by those wetlands, and if you don't live over there, it is, it is, I agree with Mr. Chase, it can be very dangerous. If you don't live by those wetlands, you don't really understand, and he does, so we're lucky, I would hope that we could keep him.
The problem is, is the question whether he can sit on both the elected-
I was told, I was told he could.
Uh, no, that's not clear.
We'll, we'll look at that.
I was told by a different attorney that he could, okay. Veterans Monument Preservation Commission?
Madam Chairman, what about Ed Buckmeyer to replace?
I haven't, I hadn't reached him, I just wanted to double check. Mm-hmm, so I'm going to just move on with that, okay?
And what about Tony Smith?
Again, I'm going to take no action tonight, very, but you will be getting a communication by email, probably.
So you want to move on?
Yep.
Okay.
Veterans Monument Preservation Commission for Academy Hill, Charles, Paul Joy has moved out of the Historic District, and Charles Devon still lives in the Historic District, so we're essentially switching that.
Madam Chairman?
Yes.
Resolve that Charles Dar, Devon of Stratford is hereby appointed member of the Veterans Monument Preservation Commission for Academy Hill, as a representative from the Historic District, replacing the term of Paul Joy.
Okay, is there a second?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
All opposed, passes six, zero. Veterans from Stratford, is there somebody who would like to make a resolution to reappoint Robert Mastroni to that commission?
I'd like to reappoint Mr. Mastroni.
Is there a second?
Second.
Okay, all in favor?
Aye.
All opposed? Okay, then passes six to zero, is there somebody who wants to make a resolution to reappoint Richard Kennedy?
So moved, Madam Chairman.
Okay, thank you, is there a second?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
All opposed, passes six, zero. Is there a resolution, would somebody like to make a resolution to reappoint Roy Friedman to that commission?
So moved, Madam Chairman.
Okay, is there a second?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
All opposed, passes six, zero. Representatives at large, is there, is there anybody who'd like to make a resolution to appoint Paul Joy as a representative at large to that commission?
So moved, Madam Chairman.
Okay, is there a second?
Second.
Okay, all in favor?
Aye.
All opposed? Is there a resolution to, would somebody like to make a resolution to reappoint Edward Roberts to that commission?
So moved.
Is there a second?
Second.
Okay, all in favor?
Aye.
All opposed? Okay, passes six, zero.
I'd like to make a resolution that Matt Catalano be appointed as a member of the Veterans Monument.
Okay, is there a second? Is there a second?
Second.
Okay, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye, all opposed? Okay, passes six, zero. George Vigaski, is there?
Seven, zero.
Oh, seven, zero, I'm sorry, thank you, can't count anymore. Is there a motion to, would somebody like to make a motion to-
So moved, Madam Chairman, to appoint George Vigaski.
Is there a second?
Second.
Okay, all in favor?
Aye.
Passes seven, zero. Is there, somebody like to make a motion?
We resolve that Ralph Coangello, have you, Coangello, did I say that right?
Yep.
Yeah, good enough.
Thank you.
Okay, is there a second? Okay, all in favor?
Aye.
All opposed, passes six, zero.
I can make a motion that James Connor be reappointed to the Veterans Monument Preservation Commission.
Second.
Okay, all in favor?
Aye.
All opposed, passes six, zero.
Madam Chairman?
Resolve that Ralph-
Yep.
I think it's seven, no, seven, zero, six, zero?
Uh, seven, zero.
Okay, Madam Chairman, I'd like to make a motion to reappoint my swim coach, Robert Newell, as a member of the Veterans Monument Preservation Commission of Academy Hill.
Second.
Okay, all in favor?
Aye.
All opposed, passes seven, zero. Parks and Rec?
We resolve that Walter Stelmack, which we call Guy, be reappointed to the Park and Rec Commission.
Okay, is there a second?
Second.
Okay, all in favor?
Madam Chairman, discussion?
Okay, discussion.
Was, wasn't there discussion about putting Sarah Calzone on that, on the Parks and Rec Commission?
I don't know if she was an alternate or what, but Guy, Guy Stelmack, been there for the whole, like, I don't know, 15 or 18 years, and what happened was an oversight that he was taking off. So Mr. Howard Watson resigned so that he can come back, I didn't know about the other young lady.
I thought he was already on the commission.
He's, but I, I-
He's on it now.
He's on, okay, I'm, excuse me, just want to-
Because we took people off, remember?
Yeah, because, because, you know, Harold Watson-
Because you were afraid he was going to come off the last time, but you kept him.
Yeah, Harold, let's actually send in a letter right now, to resign.
Harold Watson is off, but we're talking about Guy Stillman, right?
Yeah, yeah.
Guy Stillman is on the commission, is on the Parks and Rec Committee, isn't he?
I just want to be a point of information, a point of clarity, because I don't remember if it went-
Okay, is there any more discussion?
I'd just like to say that I had put forward Sarah Calzone's name in an email, she's been an alternate, she's been coming to meetings, she helped to build the playground with Mr. Llewellyn, she's, you know, she's been a faithful member, coming to all, alternate, as an alternate, coming to every meeting. I understand if there's somebody who's been on it longer, I'm sure she will as well, but I hope next time that there's an opening, she'd be considered, I'm not quite sure what's going on with that.
I just want to make one comment, Madam Chairman.
Just a point of clarity, I'm sorry, go ahead.
I'm sorry, Ms. Antezzo?
I was just going to say, I was an alternate for about eight years.
No, I understand, I'm just saying if there was an, if there was an opening, she was going to fill it, it was, you know, I kind of like put her name out there, so I'm hoping that, you know, she'll be considered. It's, you know, we want to, we want to encourage our young families to get involved and make sure that we make room for them in our different committees and commissions.
Yeah, I agree with that, but, you know, the whole, I would just want to make a point of information, is Walter Stelmack a member? Because you was looking through the paperwork, no, so this is the reason why, because it was, the reason why Mr. Harold Watson stepped down so that we can put Mr. Stelmack back. So, so of course she can be an alternate, she, just like everyone else, like I was an alternate before I was a member. So, I mean, it's just a thing of trying to understand if that's something you, you even know what it consists of, it's good to be an alternate to learn.
Okay, what, just give me the name again, one more.
His name is Walter Stelmack, everybody calls him Guy, S-T-E-L-M-A-C-H.
I second the motion.
Thank you.
Okay, any more discussion? Okay, all in favor of appointing him?
Aye.
Okay, all opposed, passes seven, zero.
Thank you.
Okay, Waterfront and Harbor Management Commission, I'd like to have this moved to the table. Is there a motion to move 9.4, no, I'm sorry, for 9.4.8.1, is there a motion to appoint David Salick as a regular member?
All right, I so moved, Madam Chairman, to replace the term of Thomas Glorensen, who's expired May 31st, 2016.
Okay, is there a second, all in favor?
Aye.
All opposed?
Madam Chairman, I would move that we table B, 9.4.8.1B.
Is there a second?
Second.
Okay, all in favor of tabling?
Aye.
Aye.
All opposed? Okay, that passes seven, zero.
Madam Chairman, the alternate members on 9.4.8.2, I don't know if we need to table, just, we'll just leave them on the agenda for the next time.
That's fine, no, we do need to table, this is new.
We have to table because they're new, okay, Madam Chairman, I would move to table 9.4.8.2A, can I do them together? And B?
Second.
Can I ask a point of clarification very quickly, with regards to this? There's no council representation on this commission, or is there? I need clarification from, because I see them meeting, and they're working so hard, like, we need to go and support them, but I don't know if we can find even just alternate spaces, council needs to be there, because they're doing a lot of great work.
There is no council representation on this, and, you know, any council members are free to go to any meetings that they would like.
I should encourage people to go, and we can, we got to find good people for them.
Okay, so, all in favor of tabling these two?
Aye.
All opposed? Okay, those are tabled. 9.4.9A, the Tax Partnership Screening Committee, I'm going to take no action right now, the Pension Board?
I have a question, is it, is all right to question that? Because I was curious to know if Tina would want to head that, or can she head that? Because she's been there for a little while, what do you think, can you put that forth, or do we go according to what's here?
They have to vote in the Pension Board meeting.
No, I just asked, I just asked.
Wait, wait, for what, the Pension Board?
Yeah, because I see-
We need another member there, because Mark, because of Mark's resignation, and I would, almost everybody else is on that Pension Board. I'm trying to remember which one of us, there were only two of us that were-
Madam Chairman, I'd like to make a motion that we appoint Beth D'Oponte to council, to the Pension Board until such time that the new members are elected from Council District 2 and 5, at which point a discussion can be held as to who wants to see.
Okay.
I think you should stay there.
Is there a second?
Second.
Okay, all in favor?
Aye.
All opposed?
Madam Chairman, I would move council member Mitzi Antezzo, my good friend next to me, to fill the interim term, interim chair until councilman from, councillor from the 2nd District is elected.
Yes, okay, is there a second?
I'll second.
Okay, all in favor?
Aye.
All opposed? Okay.
Madam Chairman?
Yep.
Item D, Board of Education Liaison Committee, I would move that we appoint council member David Harden to fill the vacancy.
Okay, is there a second?
Second.
Okay, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye, all opposed, motion passes seven to zero.
Conservation Commission, we're not going to take any action.
Can we get Joe Gresko on this Conservation Commission? As, we were supposed to get him when he was a councilman here, so that then he could serve on Roosevelt Forest